Good evening. Today is Monday, August 25th, 2025. I call to order a meeting of the Brockton City Council. Would everyone please rise and join me in honoring our country by saluting our flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. President?
Counselor Azak.
I would like to just request that we take a moment of silence. About a little over, about a week ago, a week and a half ago, Joey Andrade passed away. And Joey Andrade, even though he's not a Brockton resident, he is counselor at large, Rodriguez's brother-in-law, and counselor Texera's cousin. And his wife actually is a long time, was a long-time Brockton resident and an adjustment counselor at the Pluff School. So he passed away suddenly, and I would just like to send our condolences to the family, both the Rodriguezs, the Texeras, the Lobos of Brockton, and Counselor Rodriguez's wife and her sister. So I would just like to request a moment of silence in memory of Joey Andrade.
May he rest in eternal peace. Our deepest condolences, councilors.
Thank you, Counselor. Mr. Clark, agenda item number one, please.
Item one, we have the acceptance of the minutes of the July 28, 2025 special city council meeting.
Accept and place on file.
We have the acceptance of the minutes of the July 28, 2025 city council meeting.
Accept and place on file.
Item three, we have a public hearing ordinance, an ordinance to reestablish the R5 senior residential community zone to section 27-4, designation of zones of the Brockton city ordinances, and to amend section 27-27.6, R5 senior residential community. And we do have some of the members of the public that have signed in. You will have two minutes to speak, up to two minutes to speak. And the first person is Jamie Hodges. If you could step forward.
Just, councilors, we know this matter was before us a few weeks ago. There was an issue with the notice, so we had to repost notice and rehear this public hearing. So, time having arrived, I declare this public hearing open. Good evening, Jamie. Please, if you could give your full name and address to the clerk.
Jamie Hodges, 17 Stevens Ave, Brockton, Mass. 02301. Good evening, Council President, members of the council, and fellow residents. My name is Jamie Hodges, and I'm a Ward Two resident. This issue also touches me personally because I have an aunt and uncle who are currently looking into senior housing here in Brockton. I strongly support the creation of senior living community in our city. Brockton's senior population is growing, and we must provide safe, affordable, and supportive housing designed specifically for their needs. Seniors have given so much to this community, and they deserve to live with dignity in spaces built for them. What concerns me, however, is how this ordinance is written. While it's presented as a senior residential community zone, it would also allow developers to build large-scale, non-age-restricted multifamily housing on the same parcels. A project that starts as senior housing could double in size with all age units turning into hundreds of apartments that go beyond their original intent. Ward Four and Five, where much of this development would occur, is already dealing with traffic congestion and infrastructure challenges. Adding several hundred more units for all ages would place additional strain on the neighborhood and fundamentally change the character of the area. That is not what a senior community should look like. Brockton absolutely needs more senior housing, but it should be exactly that, senior housing, not a backdoor way to push large-scale multifamily projects our neighborhoods aren't prepared for. I urge the council to reject this ordinance as written and instead bring forward a plan that truly delivers what our seniors deserve, a community built for them, not diluted by unrelated development. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Clark, next person, please.
The second person is Patty Joyce.
Ms. Joyce, good evening.
Good evening.
If you could give your name and address to the clerk, please.
My name is Patty Joyce. I live at 122 East Street in Brockton, Mass.
Thank you.
Thank you for hearing me tonight. I am here to strongly oppose the language in section six of ordinance 24-27-4 that allows additional multifamily residential housing units that can match up to the total of the senior unit permits outlined in the ordinance change. I don't think any of us is against the over 55 piece of the ordinance, as my former speaker stated. We do need senior housing in Brockton, and it's welcomed in our ward. What happens when you add another 150 units on top of that 150 units, on top of the 150 that are going to be built at the convent, we're looking at almost 600 units in a very small area and two streets that cannot handle additional traffic. It creates a very negative impact on the surrounding neighborhoods in Ward Five and Ward Four. Thatcher Street is, already experiences heavy traffic from the auto salvage businesses. And that street, I don't know the last time you drove down it, but it's not in very good shape, and it can't handle additional traffic. East Street, which I live on, is narrow. It's a road with dangerous curves. There's been multiple accidents, including in front of my house, several times. No shoulders and no sidewalks. It is not designed for even the current traffic volume and will not be able to handle the additional traffic due to the development of the additional units of multifamily housing. Ward Four is once again the city's target for burdens without corresponding benefits. There are no benefits to the residences of Ward Four or Ward Five for this development for the multifamily housing in addition to the senior housing. We have the landfill. We have the wastewater treatment plant. We have the junkyard district, and we have a proposed power plant in our ward. In addition, and this is very concerning to me, Doug King, with the support of his lawyer, attorney, Jim Burke, has lodged an aggressive campaign with the goal of securing the votes of the ordinance committee for the change that will directly provide financial benefits to this developer with absolutely no benefits to the residents. I have done a search, and within the last short term, Doug King and Jim Burke, his lawyer, has donated to the ordinance committee members directly more than $10,000, and several thousand recently. He is trying to buy the ordinance committee's votes, in my opinion, whereas all the other city councilors total have only reaped 1,850 from them.
Three minutes.
To me, that looks like a buyout.
We got a...
Okay, I'm wrapping it up.
Thank you.
I just ask you to not let this developer, through his generous donations to your campaign, drive your decision for the residents who voted for you into office, who can likewise vote you out of office. Thank you so much for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Joyce. Mr. Clark, next speaker, please.
Third person is Paula Jones.
Good evening, Ms. Jones.
Good evening. My name is Paula Jones. I live at 130 East Street, Brockton, and I'm right abutting that property. My husband and I walk on East Street every morning, and it's like taking your life in your hands. There's no sidewalk, jumping into the grass. The property they, it was sold, I think, in 2006. We've heard many plans of what they're going to do, a cemetery, this, that, and everything. But, and I know it has to be developed, but I think senior housing would be the best bet. If there's going to be exits onto East Street, I really feel they need to put in a sidewalk. There's a sidewalk on Thatcher Street, and we get a lot of traffic through. It's a cut-through, you know, from the Bridgewater's over. So I think it's really important that, to benefit, if we get some benefit out of this, to have sidewalks put in. And I think having seniors living there, there would be less traffic. I know I'm a senior, and I don't want to be out, like, I'm late today. You know, I want to be home before it's dark. So I really think there'd be less traffic there, you know. And I know there's a housing shortage, but there are other areas in Brockton. I mean, the police station is closing. What are they going to do with that property? They could develop that. There's Walgreens on Crescent Center Street closing, and so there's property. I heard Brockton is 95% developed, but there's a lot of property, empty property, out there that could be housing. So that's about all I have to say, but I would like you to consider what I have said.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. Mr. Clark, next speaker, please.
Person number four, Ellie Texera.
Good evening, Ms. Texera.
Hello. Thank you for having me. Ellie Texera from 54 Henry Street. So, as everybody just said, senior housing is not the issue. We all want senior housing here in Brockton, and if we can have it be in Ward Five and Ward Four, that would be convenient for us. The problem is the dishonesty of saying that it's going to be senior housing, but instead sneaking in that 10 acres of multifamily. It was only two weeks ago that, Council, you stood in front of residents and voters and said that you were proud of this and that it's going to be a senior living community. But again, you failed to say that it was the 10 acres of multifamily. That is dishonest, and also, as was pointed out, you guys are getting donations from the developer and the lawyers. So who are you working for? Are you working for the residents and the folks that are voting you in, or are you just having the interest of the developers so that you guys can stay in office? It's dishonest that no one has heard about this meeting today. Thank you, Susan, for communicating with us and getting the word out. I have people on Facebook, you follow the same page that I'm on, that you can go on that page, and they will tell you how they think it's a bad idea to have a mix of senior living and multifamily. Let's just keep it senior living. If you guys feel that we need more housing, which we do, and I agree we need more housing, let's find other place to put it and keep senior living separately from multifamily. Again, let's do what's right for the voters, for the residents, not for our pockets, not for our personal interests, not for what suits us to keep us in office, but for the actual voters and the residents that are living here, that are choosing to live here. Let's not run out the seniors because now they don't have a place to live because there's not a senior community. And they're looking at Carver, they're looking at Middleborough, they're looking at East and no other place to go live because the persons, the people in office have sided with the developers and have run them out. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Texera. Mr. Clerk, next speaker, please.
Gary Keith.
Good evening, Mr. President.
Good evening, councilor.
The council president? I don't believe he can have his t-shirt.
The president, council president.
Yes, he can.
Oh, he can? Okay.
As you heard with some of the other speakers...
We have your name and address for the...
Oh, I'm sorry. Gary Keith, 854 Belmont Street, Brockton, Ward Three. You heard what some of the other speakers said already, and I totally agree with them. I'm not against a senior residential community. I am against how it's written. I also agree with the fact that where some of the donations are coming from. Something smells, it smells. The problem is this: the majority of you are not thinking like a senior citizen. Okay? I am a senior citizen now at this point here. Most of you might be homeowners. You probably wouldn't have bought your home if it was next to a three-family. You can agree with it. You don't have to agree with it. Doesn't really matter. But the point is, is that you bought a home because you wanted a single-family home. Senior citizens that go and buy a spot or rent a spot in a senior community do not want multifamilies in their neighborhood. Okay? They're trying to actually retire. They want to go home early. They want to go to sleep. Maybe it doesn't mean a damn to you guys, okay, because you're not there. Okay? But as councilors, who's supposed to be representing the people, half the people don't even know about this. Okay? It's like you're making a decision of your own accord without consulting the people that you represent, which is totally wrong within itself. And I just want to go on record that I'm totally against this project, and I hope that you guys feel the same way. Because if either one of you all would want to give up your home, or let a three, if someone wanted to build a three-family house right next door to you, you would all oppose it. Okay? You would come before the planning board, the zoning board, and you would oppose it. Okay? And I don't know why you're going to try to shove this down the senior citizens' mouths because they're not here. Give them some consideration and consider their feelings, consider where they're at, consider why they would actually want to live in a 55-and-over community.
Thank you, Mr. Keith. Thank you. Mr. Clerk, are there any more speakers on this matter?
There is not, but I did receive one email from someone who couldn't stand, asked me to read this in. So we have the hearing for the R5 resident, senior residential community. Nothing in that title indicates...
If you could, please give their name.
Veronica Stevens, and we have her address. It's not in the email, but I'll have it on the minutes. Nothing in that title indicates multifamily unrestricted. I urge the councilors to investigate further into the intentions of this request for 50-50. Ask your legal advisor, could we end up with a development that would barely be barely recognizable as a senior residential community? I would also like to take a moment and remind the council, at no time did Attorney Baraka Counselor Thompson clarify the proposal was for 50% plus 20% initially. It wasn't until the reading Counselor Fowell caught the wording. It was a deliberate attempt to mislead the council. Would it have not been clear to state 70% multifamily unrestricted, 30% token senior residential? Veronica Stevens, and that will be in the minutes of the hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Seeing no further speakers, I don't believe we speak on this matter.
There was a letter that was sent to all of the council members, including you and me, and the person who wrote it, a constituent, asked that it be read aloud. We both received it. If you'd like, I'll read it.
If you want to read it into the record, that's fine. If you could please give the name and address for the clerk.
Yes. This letter is from Pam Lindquist. She lives on East Street. She doesn't give the number, but I can get it for you. And she said, it's dated today, and she said, "To all Brockton City Council people and others present, we have lived on East Street for 50 years and just cannot believe the amount of traffic that we already get now. The cars, trucks, motorcycles, buses, heavy equipment vehicles that go by our house day in and day out is mind-blowing, as well as the speeds at which they travel. We cannot imagine what 400 more homes would create. We have many walkers on this street that take their lives into their hands because East Street has no sidewalks. Can you imagine what the increased volume of traffic would do to their safety? We also have many older residents who have lived in the neighborhood for years, as well as many new young people with small children. We do not need more traffic. This cannot be approved. Thank you, Pamela Lindquist."
Thank you, Counselor. Seeing no further speakers, I declare that portion of the hearing closed. Mr. Clerk, agenda item number four, please.
Item four, ordinance be it ordained by the city council of the city of Brockton to adopt an amendment to the fairgrounds overlay district as follows. Strike the following language in section 5A, parking residential. Parking accessory to any of the above permitted uses, including surface, garage under, and structured parking provided. However, onsite surface parking shall not provide more than 30% of the required parking per project. And the same public hearing notices why we're having another public hearing.
Time having arrived, I declare this public hearing open. Mr. Clerk, do we have any speakers on this matter?
We do. First one is Jamie Hodges.
Ms. Hodges, good evening.
Good evening. Jamie Hodges, 17 Stevens Ave, Brockton, Mass. 02301. As a resident of Ward Two, I rise tonight in support of the proposed amendment to the fairgrounds overlay district regarding residential parking. The amendment would strike the existing language in section 5A that restricts surface parking to no more than 30% of the required parking per project. I believe this change is both practical and necessary. The current cap limits flexibility for developers and property owners, often forcing them into costly garage or structured parking solutions that drive up the overall project expenses. These added costs inevitably get passed along to tenants and homeowners, making housing less affordable at a time when Brockton needs more options for working families, seniors, and young people. Allowing projects to provide more surface parking when appropriate creates more room for development to move forward and ensures that residents actually have the parking that they need. Not every project site is suitable for structured or underground garages, and surface parking can often be most efficient and accessible option, particularly for seniors or those with mobility challenges. By adopting this amendment, we are not eliminating thoughtful design of community standards. We are simply giving developers the flexibility to meet the real-world needs of Brockton's residents, while also helping to keep housing costs under control. For these reasons, I respectfully urge this council to approve this amendment. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hodges. Mr. Clerk, next speaker, please.
Number two is Cynthia Hodges.
Good evening, Ms. Hodges.
Good evening. My name is Cynthia Hodges, 17 Stevens Ave. I would like to say good evening to the president, the councilors, and everyone. I am in support of, you know, the parking requirements at the Brockton Fairgrounds to allow the proposed development, you know, to move forward because the Brockton Fairgrounds is a historic and a valuable property. I live right up the street from it. So like I say earlier, and I still say again, that, you know, it's just, I saw, especially when it's getting ready to come to be wintertime. You know, updating the parking requirements is necessary in practice to ensure this project can be realized. This project will not only enhance the fairground area, but also contribute to the Brockton long-term economic stability. I urge you to support the amendment so the developer can process our city and benefit from this investment. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hodges. Mr. Clerk, any more speakers?
That's all I have.
Seeing no more speakers on this matter, I declare that portion of the hearing closed. Thank you, everyone, for coming out this evening to speak on these topics. Mr. Clerk, number five, please.
Item five, we have the report of the ordinance committee for its meeting of August 7th, 2025.
Accept and place on file.
We have the report of the finance committee for its meeting of August 18th, 2025.
Accept and place on file.
We have a communication from the mayor advising the city council that effective July 21, 2025, Dr. Victor Sebastian has been appointed as acting commissioner of Health and Human Services for the city of Brockton pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 41, Section 61A.
Accept and place on file.
We have a communication from the plumbing and gas inspector, Jason Yetman, requesting a residency waiver under section 2-110 of the ordinance of the city of Brockton.
Accept and place on file.
We have a communication from the commissioner of buildings relative to the same.
Accept and file.
Communication from the mayor recommending the same.
Accept and file.
Communication from the mayor, in accordance with the general laws of Massachusetts, Chapter 44, recommending that the city council authorize the acceptance and expenditure of a donation in the amount of $321.47 from Robert Beauchaine to the Brockton Council on Aging. These funds represent the value of several gifts donated by Mr. Beauchaine.
Accept and place on file.
Communication from the CFO relative to the same.
Accept and file.
Communication from the mayor, in accordance with the general laws of Massachusetts, Chapter 44, recommending the city council authorize the proposed transfer of $33,547.68. This appropriation provides funding for one year, July 1, 2025 through June 30, 2026, of a one-year contract.
Accept and place on file.
Communication from the CFO relative to the same.
Accept and file.
Communication from the mayor, in accordance with the general laws of Massachusetts, Chapter 44, recommending that the city council authorize the proposed transfer of $63,566.62. This appropriation provides funding for one year, July 1, 2025 through June 30, 2026, of a one-year contract.
Accept and place on file.
Communication from the CFO relative to the same.
Accept and file.
Communication from the mayor, in accordance with the general laws of Massachusetts, Chapter 44, recommending that the city council authorize the proposed transfer of $22,151.48. This appropriation provides funding for one year, July 1, 2025 through June 30, 2026, of a one-year contract.
Accept and place on file.
Communication from the CFO relative to the same.
Accept and file.
Communication from the superintendent of parks requesting approval for a donation of a memorial bench in the memory of Junior Ortega for the DW Field Park. All costs associated for this memorial bench, including installation, would be incurred by friends and family.
Accept and place on file.
Communication from the mayor recommending the same.
Accept and file.
Communication from the CFO relative to the same.
Accept and file.
Communication from the mayor, in accordance with the general laws of Massachusetts, Chapter 44, recommending that the city council authorize a total appropriation of $470,000 using the attached form of order with language as recommended by Attorney Richard A. Manley, Jr. of Troutman Paparlocke LLP, the city's bond counsel, in order to provide funding through borrowing said amount for the purpose of purchasing equipment used to maintain DW Field Golf Course.
Accept and place on file.
Communication from the CFO relative to the same.
Accept and file.
Communication from the mayor, in accordance with the general laws of Massachusetts, Chapter 44, recommending that the city council accept the lease agreement entered into with Metro South Chamber of Commerce, Inc., a nonprofit corporation which has an address of 60 School Street, Brockton, Mass.
Accept and place on file.
Communication from the CFO relative to the same.
Accept and file.
Communication from the, excuse me, from the mayor, in accordance with the general laws of Massachusetts, Chapter 44, recommending that the city council support the proposed sale of the Brockton Police Headquarters located at 7 Commercial Street.
Accept and place on file.
Communication from the CFO relative to the same.
Accept and file.
Item 28, we have an ordinance amending article 3, Division 2, Section 2-137, vacation leave, to amend vacation leave and personal days in city council, April 28, 2025. Read and refer to the standing committee on ordinance. That report was favorable.
Mr. President.
Counselor Lally.
Mr. President, I would like to offer a motion made in consultation with the city that we think would be a better fit. Motion to strike the words and four personal days with pay. Or do you want me to hand that over to you?
Yeah, you have a proposed amendment?
I have a proposed amendment, yes. Motion to amend.
Second.
Second.
Counselors, the motion is made and properly seconded to amend gen. item number 29. Mr. Clerk, if you could read the amendment, please.
There's a motion to strike the words and four personal days with pay in the first sentence of Article 3, Section 2-137A. Strike the words "four personal days" in the second sentence of Article 3, Section 2-137A. Strike the words "in the 12 months after" of Article 3, Section 2-137, and insert in its place in the fiscal year of which, and to insert the following language following the second sentence of the Article 3, Section 2-137A. Additionally, every employee occupying a full-time position subject to the classification and pay plan shall be granted four personal days with pay annually on the first day of the fiscal year. For new hires for the first year of such an employee's employment only, personal day allotment shall be prorated based on the amount of time left in the fiscal year.
Mr. President, that's being offered because it's just going to be easier to track everyone's personal day allotment if we don't have to worry about every single work anniversary, and it's just uncleanly on a fiscal year. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Madam Clerk, if you could offer your explanation as well?
Yeah, it's just to clarify that the four days are granted upon the new fiscal year, and then also for new hires, it's on a proration amount so that they don't get four days if they get hired, you know, almost towards the end of the fiscal year.
Thank you for that.
Just a point of information, that's how all the other employees in the city are done, so it was going to be a logistical nightmare for the pay people to do it this way, so that's all this does.
Counselors, a motion is made and properly seconded to amend this ordinance. Counselor Rodriguez.
On the motion.
Yes, Counselor.
Well, I think we need to be clear on this. This is just for the ordinance positions that we're voting on?
Correct.
To give them an additional four days of personal time?
This, yes, came out of ordinance, I believe.
I wasn't, I'm a member of the...
It's not an additional four days.
I'm a member of the ordinance committee, but I think this actually went through ordinance when I was involved in my car crash, though I didn't have a chance to be at ordinance.
I possibly should have a member of the ordinance committee speak, but I can tell you, these are not four additional. The ordinance positions do not have personal days. They're the only employees in the city that don't, and that's essentially, and again, I don't know if somebody from the ordinance committee would rather speak.
We don't have it in front of us, but we could...
You want to speak to the four-day issue? I think there might be some confusion if...
Sure. I think what was presented at the last ordinance meeting was like a chart of what all the unions' positions get, and I think almost all of the unions, maybe one, got three days, but all of the other unions get four days. The ordinance positions, that work, I believe, was last changed like maybe the end of the 90s, and so it's just a proposal for the ordinance positions to receive four personal days. That language on the amendment is just about how to track it.
Was four days part of the original underlying ordinance, and this is just a tracking issue?
Correct. It's not, the ordinance positions have never had personal days. This change would give them four personal days.
But I guess the discussion, at least the argument earlier on, was that they were supposed to get these four days right away without even going through their probationary period in a sense, so that's what I have a little bit of a problem with in terms of, you know, we're hiring somebody off the streets, automatically they get four personal days?
No. That's what the amendment does. The amendment makes it so it's like prorated. So if you get hired, your package wouldn't, let's say you got hired in April, but you're going to have your new fiscal year come July 1st. You're going to prorate those four days, so they might get less than a day, and then as of July 1, they get four.
So they actually have, so technically, they get, let's say, a day or so before the fiscal year begins, but as of July 1, so they actually have been in the employment of the city for less than four months, they're going to get four days right off the bat.
I guess, if they, they would prorate for those first four months, and then once they...
of the city for less than four months, they're gonna get four days right off the bat.
I guess within, if they, they would prorate for those first four months and then once July hits, they would get four days.
So if somebody hires in June, he gets no months from the previous fiscal year, but as, as of July 1st, they get four days right off the bat?
Under that amendment, correct.
Period. They get four days, you know, so in July, they can take four days personal day.
Yeah, I don't know if like your department head needs to approve your four days or if like how that works, cause not every one of your ordinance positions are department heads. Some of them fall under the supervision of a department head, but yeah.
I'm gonna vote against this because I have a real problem with this. I think somebody needs to be in the employment of a city for at least a few months before you get a, a lump sum of four days. I mean, that basically makes no, no sense to anybody that works in the private sector, um, because you gotta kind of build this stuff up as you go along. You don't get it automatically, you know, give me my month's vacation, give me my, you know, four days off and things like that. Uh, and that's, I'm gonna vote against it, but I just wanted to make sure that we're clear of that.
This does not affect vacation at all. This is just.
No, 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 I'm saying just the way we go about giving this stuff out, I think there's gotta be a little more common sense in the sense that you gotta be in the employment of a city for a certain amount of time before you're eligible for all the benefits that you would normally get.
Well, at least that should have been a discussion, uh, had an ordinance.
Actually.
It wasn't there, so that's.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. President.
Were you the sponsor of the, who, did you sponsor?
I did.
This ordinance?
Yeah.
Counselor Lally.
Thank you. On the motion?
Please.
Uh, just as a point of clarification, this is something that all other employees of the city already get. This is sort of to catch up the ordinance employees. Additionally, and this could just be my interpretation of it, but the amendment reads, uh, that for new hires for the first year of such an employee's employment only, per, personal day allotment shall be prorated based on the amount of time. So that's not for their first fiscal year in service. So they get hired in, in June, they don't get any personal days for that fiscal year, but that's the first year of their service. So that.
To you, Mr. Chairman, but that's what I'm having a problem with because to me, you've been in the employ, in the employment of the city for less than six months and automatically you'd get four personal days?
I don't, I don't think that's how that shakes out because the first, this, it doesn't say fiscal year, it says first full year of an employee's, sir, uh, employ, employment.
It's, uh, it's still not clear enough because I, the way I see it, I think it's gonna be July 1st, you get four days and you can take your four days right off the July 1st. Unless it's specifically in the, in the order that says you ha, it has to be in July, you cannot take four days and August, you cannot take four days. I think it's, uh, I think it's just way too mu, I mean, we have people that actually are employed in the city for three months and technically they could, they could just take their full-fledged of vacation and their full-fledged of sick time. I have a real problem with that, so.
Just, just so you know, they wouldn't be able to take any vacation or, in that case, they haven't earned any vacation yet.
Right, but I'm saying as they're earning it, their four days are already in the books according to, according to what, what's being said.
I don't think those four days get in the books on the 1st of July.
1st of July, but I started in June. I started in June, as of July 1st, I get four days.
You may want to postpone and have Mr. Clarkson.
Mr. President.
Counselor Azak.
On the motion, I think if we get the, uh, motion withdrawn and send this back to ordinance, I believe Counselor Farrell did bring up a similar, uh, just, we had a similar discussion during ordinance regarding this matter that concerned him. So I think if councils would like, we can send this back to really maybe invite, uh, somebody from personnel and have them answer these questions for us.
Well, the, the alternative is this is to pass to a third. It's not on the final vote. Um, so I guess we got two options. If we can clarify that information between now and the final vote on the third reading or if somebody wants to make a motion back to ordinance, that's also, uh, proper procedure. So I guess that'd be the will of the council. Right now, we do have a motion.
I'll, I'll withdraw the motion and this can be figured out by members of personnel uh, before the next, before the next reading.
Uh, the motion is withdrawn. Who was the second?
Who was the second?
There was a second.
Who? He's there.
I sec, I withdraw the second, yeah.
Okay. Um, Counselor Duran, Duran Court.
Yeah, I mean, I don't, it's like, I don't know if I can speak on that matter because they just withdrew it. I was gonna talk on that and we got two.
Go ahead.
Excellent. So I mean, from, from what I understand, right, obviously this is a city council meeting and we have an ordinance committee. I mean, some of the question that are raising tonight should have been questioned during that ordinance.
They were, Counselor. Counselor Farrell brought, I believe through you, Mr. Chair, Mr. President, Counselor Farrell, you brought up, you had a similar, it's the same concern as Counselor Rodriguez during the meeting.
Uh, may I please continue?
Yes.
But they were.
But this, this, yeah, we'll try not to do a back and forth.
Okay, but so these matters did come up.
This matter's gonna go back to ordinance. We can have a full discussion.
Sure, no problem.
At that time, but if you want to finish up.
Excellent. So I mean, in, in regard to the, and, and I would advise the counselor from what's happened to not disturb me. Let me just finish my point. In regard to the discussion that we are having tonight, obviously this is an ordinance, right? This is something that was presented whereby those of you who are member of that, you know, ordinance committee had access not only to talk about it, but to review it. To actually saying that this is what we did when we actually questioning the intention behind it is troublesome to me because in my view, when it's come down to fiscal year, right, it started July 1st to July 1st. So I would assume based on that proposal, if somebody hired June 1st to July 1st, they don't have any vacation day. And of course they collect stated that because in my world, when you get hired, there's what they call a probationary period whereby you cannot take first vacation and you cannot use what they call personal days. And that would be within that circle. And in my view, I guess it will be up to, well, not even up to HR because this ordinance will give HR the ability to determine whether or not they can push that. I, I'm assuming that it will be up to the ordinance to determine how HR will apply that, meaning every quarter they can give somebody one day. Because if you think about it, right, so it's 12 months and it's four days, so it doesn't matter who you are, as long as you are in the system for less than three months, you don't have it. That's just common sense. But unless we have this in the ordinance, HR can determine whether or not somebody can take it. One person can say, you know what, I'm gonna take all at once. That's why I think it's important, not just to send this back, but also to clarify where do we go from there? Is it one day per quarter or somebody can take it at once? Because I don't, I don't, I, I, I don't know anywhere somebody has a job where you can just take four days just like that. It's base accumulative, meaning you get hired July 1st, your, you started July 1st and it's end July 1st. That's a fiscal year. That's when we vote the budget. Mr. President, give me a minute.
We're gonna have this discussion in ordinance. Um, I'm trying to get everybody.
But I, but I understand though, we just, we just made a motion to do something with this, but I just don't wanna, I just don't wanna act like this is perfect and whatever. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna leave it there, but I think it's important for the ordinance committee to understand what they are giving HR because HR cannot do anything without this. Whatever we put in this, this is what they're gonna do. Don't, don't bring somebody for, from HR without questioning our own understanding about this. It's a law. Once we pass this from here, it's over and they can, they can give it whatever interpretation that, that they have. We as elected official, we have, I'm, I'm about to finish. We as elected official, we have to give them what to work with. Don't just assume they're gonna come and give us some kind of explanation. That would be unacceptable and I will leave it there.
Thank you, Counselors.
Motion to send this back to ordinance.
Second.
Motion is made and properly seconded to send, uh, refer this matter back to ordinance. All in favor? Anyone opposed? Uh, the matter's gonna be referred back to ordinance. Uh, next agenda item, please.
Item 29, we have an ordinance to amend the pay plan ordinance to include the position deputy commissioner of public works and to set the wage scale for the position. In city council, May 12, 2025, read and refer to the standing committee on ordinance. That report was favorable as amended.
Counselors, the question is on passage to a third reading as amended by hand vote. All in favor? Anyone opposed?
One opposed.
One, one in opposition.
Ordinance, an ordinance to amend the fairgrounds overlay, ordinance to amend language relative to parking minimum. In city council, May 27, 2025, read and refer to the standing committee on ordinance. That report was favorable.
Question is on passage to a third reading by hand vote. All in favor? Anyone opposed? This matter's also referred to planning.
Item 31, I'll read it and then. Order that the city council authorize the acceptance and expenditure of the total grant funds in the amount of $50,000 from the Massachusetts Department of Mental Health to the Brockton Police Department, $50,000. In city council, July 28, 2025, read and refer to the standing committee on finance. That report was favorable.
Mr. President.
Counselor Lally.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to table this item, uh, which I will explain a little more after the tabling.
Actually, actually, can you re, can you rescind your second so that we can make the explanation?
Okay, I'll just make that, yeah. Yeah, I'll make it.
Now that's the motion is made.
Yeah. So Counselors, uh, the motion to table is because there's been an update. Uh, the $50,000 that we were going to receive to this grant has changed. It has increased by a notable amount. Um, and I think it behooves the city to accept a larger amount than go with what we've got on this paper. So I have made a motion to table this, uh, or I will make a motion to table this after I'm done speaking. Uh, after the motion is made, seconded and voted on, I will rise again to introduce a late vi, a late file with a replacement order and make a motion that we act on it under suspension of the rules this evening.
Thank you, Counselor. Um, the motion to table is on the floor?
Motion to table.
No, we'll take the second.
Second.
Motion is made, properly seconded to table this matter. All in favor? Anyone opposed? This matter's tabled.
Mr. President.
Counselor Lally.
I'd like to make a motion to introduce a late file and act under suspension of the rules, vote on it tonight.
Motion.
Second.
Motion is made and properly seconded, uh, to, uh, accept a late file and act on that late file this evening. Mr. Clerk, if you could, oh, all in favor of, uh, accepting a late file?
Thank you.
Anyone opposed? Mr. Clerk, if you could, uh, read the late file, please.
If I can find it. I have it right here. We have a communication from the mayor in accordance with the general laws of Massachusetts, Chapter 44, recommending that the city council authorize the acceptance and expenditure of the grant award in the amount of $243,030 from the Massachusetts Department of Mental Health to the Brockton Police Department. The jail arrest diversion program grant, excuse me, the jail arrest diversion grant provides funding for the police departments to support outreach clinicians who will work in cooperation with the BPS's co-response officers and conjunction with other police personnel in Brockton.
Accept and place it on file.
Communication from the CFO relative to the same.
Accept and file.
Order that the city council authorize the acceptance and expenditure of the total grant funds in the amount of $243,030 from the Massachusetts Department of Mental Health to the Brockton Police Department.
Counselors, the question comes on adoption by roll call vote. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Azak?
Yes.
Duran Court?
Yes.
Farrell?
Yes.
Griffin?
Yes.
Lally?
Yes.
Castro?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Tavares?
Yes.
Texera?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Ten in the affirmative.
The order is adopted.
Item 32, order that the city council authorize the acceptance and expenditure of the total grant funds in the amount of $125,000 from the Massachusetts Department of Public Health, $125,000, to the mayor's office, $125,000. In city council, July 28, 2025, read and refer to the standing committee on finance. That report was favorable.
Counselors, questions on adoption by roll call vote. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Azak?
Yes.
Duran Court?
Yes.
Farrell?
Yes.
Griffin?
Yes.
Lally?
Yes.
Castro?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Tavares?
Yes.
Texera?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Ten in the affirmative.
The order is adopted.
Order that the mayor be and hereby is authorized to execute the following easements. Attached here too is Exhibits 1 and 2 concerning the property located on the eastly side of Center Street in Pembroke, Massachusetts. Exhibit 1, easement from the city of Brockton to Gary Darman and Patricia L. Darman, husband and wife, as tenants by the entirety of 792 Center Street, Pembroke, Mass. 10 pages, including legal descriptions. And Exhibit, Exhibit 2, easement from the city of Brockton to Lester G. Freeman and Denise Freeman as joint tenants of 794 Center Street, Pembroke, Massachusetts. 9 pages, including legal descriptions. In city council, July 28, 2025, read and refer to the standing committee on finance. That report was favorable.
Counselors, question comes on adoption by a roll call vote. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Azak?
Yes.
Duran Court?
Yes.
Farrell?
Yes.
Griffin?
Yes.
Lally?
Yes.
Castro?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Tavares?
Yes.
Texera?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Ten in the affirmative.
The order is adopted.
Mr. President, I make a motion for reconsideration in hopes that it fails.
Second.
A motion is made, properly seconded for reconsideration in the hopes that it fails. All in favor of reconsider, reconsideration. Those opposed, reconsideration fails.
Item 34, resolve, be it resolved that the mayor, Robert Sullivan, chief financial officer, Troy Clarkson, and opera project manager, Dan Pallotta be invited to come before the finance committee to provide an update regarding opera projects, funding, spending, and infrastructure planning to date. In city council, July 28, 2025, read and refer to the standing committee on finance. That report was favorable.
in favor of reconsideration? Anyone opposed? The reconsideration fails. Thank you, Counselor.
Item 41, order that the city of Brockton appropriates the amount of $470,000 for the purpose of purchasing equipment used to maintain DW Field Golf Course. To meet this appropriation, the city treasurer, with the approval of the mayor, is authorized to borrow said amount under Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, Section 7-1, or pursuant to any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds or notes of the city therefore. Further order that the city treasurer is authorized to file an application with the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Municipal Finance Oversight Board to qualify, under General Laws, Chapter 44A, any and all bonds or notes of the city authorized by this order, and to provide such information and execute such documents as the Municipal Finance Oversight Board of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts may require.
Refer to finance.
Order that pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 40, Section 14, and the city of Brockton's ordinance 2-157, the city of Brockton hereby accepts the lease agreement entered into with Metro South Chamber of Commerce, Inc., a nonprofit corporation, and which has an address of 60 School Street, Brockton, Mass., for certain real property located at 50 School Street, Brockton, Mass. Said lease agreement shall run for a three-year term, beginning July 1, 2025, and ending June 30, 2028. The mayor is authorized to execute any and all documents necessary in connection with said lease agreement.
Refer to finance.
And we have ordered that the city council hereby declare 7 Commercial Street, Brockton Police Headquarters, as surplus and available for disposition and sale to the most advantageous proposer after soliciting requests for proposals, and further that the mayor be and hereby is authorized to execute any and all documents necessary to dispose of said property.
Refer to finance.
Mr. President?
Counselor Farwell.
Mr. President, when item 43 comes in, I would ask that you have the mayor or someone come in with specifics as to what they will include in their RFP for use of that property. That's a prime piece of real estate, and we all have a vested interest in what might end up at 7 Commercial Street. So rather than just say, yes, we're going to declare it as available for sale, I'd like to know what are their long-term plans? What do they want to see done with that piece of property?
Absolutely. Thank you, Counselor. Any late files, Mr. Clerk?
That's it. We just see earlier one.
Counselors, that's the end of our agenda. I will open it up for personal recognition. Any counselors want to be recognized? Seeing none?
Mr. Reminer, next week, finance will be...
Yes. Counselors, next Monday is Labor Day, so our finance committee will be heard on Tuesday, September 2, 7:00 PM here in this chamber. With no further city business before this council, I declare this meeting adjourned.